Called to order the Nashua Planning Board meeting on November 3, 2022. Could I please have a roll call?
Sure.
Mayor Johnson, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclair, Adam Varley, Maggie Harper.
Present.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch. And Mark Meehan.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. Has anyone had a chance to look over the minutes from October 20, 2022 and like to make a motion to approve them?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 20, 2022 Planning Board meeting as written.
We have a motion from Mr. Ballinger to approve the minutes from the October 20, 2022 meeting. All those in favor?
Do we need a second?
Oh, sorry, second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention. Do we have any communications?
Yes. Good evening, Planning Board members. In your packet tonight, we have two correspondence. One is a letter from Andy Pearlman requesting continuance of the 145 to 149 Temple Street projects. And then we also have an email from Paul Chisholm asking for a continuance of the Merritt Parkway to November 17. And for the record, the asphalt plant will be going on December 1. Thank you. That's all we have.
Thank you. I will now read the procedure of the meeting and hearings. They are as follows. After legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision plan is read by the chair, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of the project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations. The board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions and the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board may then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. One public member will be allowed to respond to only those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. We ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and to not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. Thank you for your interest and your courteous attention. I ask that you turn off your cell phones and pagers at this time. Thank you. Let's see what we have on the agenda. Up first, we have old business conditional special permits. We have none. Old business subdivision plans. We have A-21-0299, A-21-0300. And would someone like to make a motion to continue these two cases to the date determined, which is December 1, 2022? Yes, Ms. Lee?
I motion to table A-21-0299 and A-22-0177 to the meeting of December 1.
We...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll add it during discussion. I just, for point of clarification, I believe the landing project was already tabled to a date certain, the 17th, if I'm not mistaken. So that would not need action. We just need to table the Temple Street, the A-21-0299, to December 1, if that's correct. Okay.
Yes, that is correct. Do I have a second for that motion?
So I amended to just be A-21-0299. Is that correct?
I believe that would...
Is it possible to do all of them at the same time?
I was wondering that, actually.
Yeah.
Are we able to do that?
Let's do them all at the same time.
So I will amend it to read A...
Thank you.
I will get this down eventually. Do we, are we doing the merits as well, right?
No.
Oh, no. Take those seven. You can stop at 3:02.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So A-22-0178 and A-22-0179 to the meeting of December 1, 2022.
The Merritt Parkway one will go November 17.
Right. That's why I pulled that one back, right? The A-22-082, I did not...
So it's just these four, an old business? A-21-0299 through A-21-0302?
We're not doing 0179?
That will be a different motion.
Oh, okay. Let me try this one more time.
You got it.
A-21-0299 through A-21-0 through 02. That's correct?
That's correct.
To the December 1, 2022 meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a motion from Ms. Klee?
Well, just, yeah, just for clarification, on my agenda, I have 0177. Is that not, should not be part of that, right?
Correct. That's a different, that's different.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have the motion from Ms. Klee to continue these four cases to December 1, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so old business subdivision plans and old business site plan, those have already been tabled to November 17, 2022. As for old business site plans, case A-22-0182. Would someone like to make a motion? Yes, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to continue old business site plan, case A-22-0182, and case number A-22-0039, Merritt Place, to the November 17, 2022 Planning Board meeting.
I have a motion from Mr. Ballinger. Would someone like to second it?
Second.
Second from Mr. Meehan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, on to...
May I ask a question? I know A-22-0177 has tabled to November 17. Did we do that at the last meeting?
Those were, I believe, to answer your question...
The reason I'm asking is because we have this letter, that's why.
No, I believe that those were tabled to a date certain at our last meeting.
Okay.
So I believe that no further action is required from the board.
Perfect.
If that is correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
That was just what I wanted for clarification, because I saw this letter and I thought maybe...
Great question.
Thank you.
Great question.
Confusing.
Okay, on to new business. New business conditional special use permits, we have none. New business subdivision plans, case A-22-0214, Robert Champagne owner. Is someone here to speak for the applicant? Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to accept it.
We need to take jurisdiction.
Will someone like to make a motion to take jurisdiction?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I moved to accept project A-22-0214. That is complete and ready for jurisdiction.
We have a motion from Mr. Meehan to accept and take jurisdiction. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Ms. Klee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're ready to hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Earl Blatchford. I'm a project manager with Hayner Swanson, representing the landowner and applicant, Bob Champagne. Mr. Champagne wasn't able to be present in person, but he is on the Zoom call if there's any questions that I can't answer. Andy Pearlman's also here to give me moral support and answer any legal-type questions that I can't handle. The purpose of the application, we're seeking approval for subdividing one single-family residential lot into three single-family residential lots. Lot is located at 22 Conan Road. It's also identified at the Sessors Office as map C, Lot 171. It's, the lot, the existing lot is on the display plan is outlined in green. It's .864 acres located on the corner of Conan Road and Yarmouth Drive in Ward 9. It's owned, C suburban residential zone, also known as R9. So you need 9,000 square foot minimum lot area, 75-foot minimum frontage, and 90 feet of minimum width and 90 feet of minimum depth. The, all of the abutters to the lot are single-family residences on all sides. Existing utilities available in both Conan Road and Yarmouth, municipal water, municipal sewer, Penetech water, natural gas, and overhead electric telephone and cable. The existing site is, it's an existing one-story, single-family resident with a full basement and garage under its, Mr. Champagne's primary residence. Has a single driveway off from Conan Road near the corner of Yarmouth. It's fairly steep driveway. The house sits up somewhat high on the property, and the driveway to get up to that kind of plateau where the house and the backyard and parking area are is rather steep. It exceeds what current standards would be. The existing house is serviced as far as utilities. It's tied into municipal sewer, actually in, even though the address is 22 Conan, the service is actually run in from the sewer main in Yarmouth. It has overhead telephone, electric telephone and cable. It's not connected to the natural gas. They have an oil-fired furnace, and it has an individual well, so it's not connected to the water main at this time. The existing, in the existing backyard, there is an in-ground pool and some outbuildings. And the topography, basically, as I said, the house and the yard are situated kind of up high on the lot. And from that area, from that high area, the topography basically sheets towards the road. So the northerly portion sheets north to Yarmouth, and the westerly portion sheets west down to Conan Road. So with the proposed subdivision, as I said, one lot into three, the new Lot 77, 177, excuse me, is, Mr. Champagne wants to relocate the existing house. It was built by his father, so it has sentimental value. And so, as you can see, the proposed lot line, one of the proposed lot lines basically bisects the house. So what's, what has to happen is, he's going to get a house mover, they're going to move it off the existing foundation onto some crib work temporarily, then construct the new lot, new foundation, new driveway, and parking area, and then move the house onto the new foundation. And all that actually has to happen before the subdivision can be finalized, because where the house sits now, you can't finalize the subdivision without creating a zoning issue. So it's a little bit unique in that way. So that'll be the new Lot 77, 177, which is shown on the site plan that we have on sheet three. And then the other two lots are, will have frontage on and access from Yarmouth. And those are proposed to be also single-family. And we have shown two-story houses with approximately 2,200 square feet with full basement and garage under. Is what we have shown at this time. It's our, it's our best estimate of what will be built out there. And the new lot numbers are identified as 290, 2996 and 2997. The addresses will be 1 and 3 Yarmouth Drive respectively. And all three lots are supposed to be tied into municipal sewer, Penetech water, natural gas, and overhead electric services, electric telephone communications for all of them. Stormwater management, as I said, we're basically, the drainage pattern basically stays the same. Basically, there's a portion that sheets to the north to Yarmouth Drive, and the rest basically sheets to the west at Conan Road. And we've graded, graded the proposed sites such that we have a leaching catch basin on each lot, and the majority of the runoff, the entire roof area and the majority of the driveway and the lot areas, will run down to these leaching catch basins and infiltrate. The soils are very well-drained soils. We've done test pits and percolation tests out there, and soil is very suitable for stormwater infiltration. So we have proposed that to mitigate the impact of the development proposed. And the way it's designed, it meets the city's stormwater regulations. There are no zoning issues. These are all conforming lots. There are no existing non-conformities on the existing lot, so there aren't any zoning issues that had to be addressed. We have received tech review planning comments on October 6, and we responded to those on October 12. And we received engineering comments on October 24 and responded to those on October 31. And you should have copies of both of the response letters, and the latest plan incorporates both of those resubmittals. And no other comments from any other departments have been received. We do have three waiver requests, and you have a letter which details them. And I can, happy to read from that if you'd like, but briefly, request number one is from section 190-212. We're requesting that the board allow a contribution to the sidewalk fund in the amount of $13,950 in lieu of constructing sidewalks along the two frontages of the site. The request number two is from section 190-282B9, which is the existing conditions and topographic survey within 1,000 feet of the site. We have submitted a, a plan from the GIS system, which basically shows the information in that area. We've, and this has become a kind of a typical request. And the third request is from section 190-122, to allow overhead electric telephone and communication cable services to all three of the new lots, which is the standard in the neighborhood. Everything is overhead, and that's really the preference of the utility companies to continue to do that. These are all requests that have been made on recent projects by our firm, so. In closing, you know, we believe the development's, it's being done in a responsible manner. As I said, all the lots are conforming. We need zoning, and we've, we've addressed all of the staff comments. The, we're agreeable to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff report, and respectfully request that you approve this plan tonight, and happy to answer any questions that the board or members of the audience may have.
Thank you. At this time, does anyone have any questions from the board? Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was curious about the proposed three-foot retaining wall on the south end of Lot 177?
Yeah.
Is that because of the stormwater systems you're putting in?
No, it's because we have to, as I said, the existing house sits up pretty high, and there's actually a retaining wall, which was about a two-to-three-foot retaining wall, basically a landscape wall, but Mr. Champagne's house, actually, his lot sits higher in the front portion, in front of the house, sits higher than the lot to the south. And, but we're going to be regrading, because we can't have a steeper driveway off Conan, we're going to be grading that site down. So we're actually kind of reversing the situation. So that we have a short landscape-type wall, which now is going to be retaining soil adjacent to the property line to the south. And so the front portion of Mr. Champagne's lot will now be a little bit lower than his neighbors in that front yard area. So...
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Meehan.
In a drive-by today, noted on Yarmouth, there's a fenced area that was like construction equipment, there was a couple things, wood pile. I didn't see that noted in the plan, assuming that's just part of the lot, or...
Yes, that's part of the lot. It's, actually, the wood pile is shown on the plan, and the gravel area. Equipment, you know, anything, we don't locate, you know, something that's part there. But...
There's nothing funny about the ownership or the...
No, 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 no. I mean, Mr. Champagne owns RWC Excavating, so, you know, I think he keeps a piece of equipment or two at his house. He's done that for years. He does have a contractor's yard in Hollis, has an office downtown, but, and we did actually, the excavator may be there because he provided the excavator for test pits that we did for the stormwater design, so. It may have just stayed there, I don't know. Thank you. You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing no questions, I'd like to go to the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. Do I have anyone out here in the audience? Seeing none, do I have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to opposition or concern to the plan?
There's no one on Zoom.
Oh, there isn't one on Zoom?
Well, there is, but he's the applicant.
Oh, that makes things easy. Next, is there anyone in the audience that wish, would like to speak in favor of the plan? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address. And there is no one on Zoom.
Just the applicant.
Okay. Does the board have any additional follow-up questions? Anything else that you'd like to ask? Yes, Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was curious from the city's perspective on the sidewalks. I mean, this is something we talk about so many times with these kinds of projects, and that's an area, road, that, you know, it would be great to have sidewalks in. I don't know how, I think it's prohibited at some level by the topography, but I wonder, Ian had any insight into that?
I don't specifically. I know that the applicant's package references, there's no sidewalks within 250 feet, and that's not on the high priority list. I mean, we have this summer gone through an inventory of all city sidewalks. We have over 180 miles of sidewalk, many in need of repair, and so our priority typically would be focusing on, you know, improving and removing obstructions and improving a sidewalk that we currently have before extending sidewalks. But I do see the applicants making a contribution in lieu of, which could be applied, you know, here or elsewhere.
Thank you. With the public hearing ending, we go into our public meeting. Do we have any comments from the board? Anything from anyone regarding the case? Do I have a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to approve new business, case number A-22-0214, property located at 22 Conan Road. Finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO, section 190-138G, subject to nine conditions. The first, with respect to a waiver of section 190-282B9, requiring physical features, shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Condition number two, request for a waiver of section 190-221C, with respect to underground utilities, shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three, request for a waiver of section 190-212A1, with respect to sidewalk, shall read "is granted," will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, and the amount within the condition shall read $13,950. Stipulations four through nine shall remain as written in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. So we have a motion from Mr. Ballinger to approve case A-22-0214 with nine stipulations. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Klee? All those in favor?
Oh, Madam Chair, I just want to note, I obviously arrived late in this...
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
But I did, I had had the opportunity to read that. So I just wanted to say that I do feel comfortable voting on this despite having, not been here for the entire time, so just wanted to provide a very brief explanation.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business site plans, we have none. Other business?
Just the tentative agenda?
Oh, yeah. Has anyone had a chance to review the tentative agenda to determine if there's any proposals of regional impact? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the technical review meeting of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, I'd like to make a motion that there are no new projects as proposed that would have regional impact.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. We have a motion to accept the upcoming cases, and that is determined that none of them are of regional impact. Do I have a second? Or do I need, yes, do I have a second?
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? And that motion passes. Thank you so much. Now we go into the non-public session.
Not doing that.
We're not doing that. All right, next that out. So I guess, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Just, just a quick comment. November seventeenth, I, I think we'll all have to have a little extra caffeine or chocolate, so we...
I told Sam we need a box of Jell-O that night, I think.
Whoever is running the meeting might want to call for periodic breaks. I, I don't think anyone, I know I can't go five or six straight hours of, but maybe others can.
I won't be here, I'm sorry.
I'll be in and out for certain subjects.
I, I think we might have to just find out if we'll have a quorum for that meeting.
Just, just for the record, there'll be things that I have to recuse myself from, but my alternate will be in my place, so we're gonna tag-team, gonna go back and forth.
And I guess as long as we're speaking of that, I'll continue to recuse myself from, from the Merritt Parkway case, so, but yeah, that was all I have, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ballinger.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Anyone like to second that motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mann would like to second. Meeting is adjourned.
Seven thirty-two.